Louisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. First up is discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda items. So we do have a proclamation declaring August 26th is International Play Music on the Porch Day. Patrick, did you want to say anything after I read that?
I don't have to. I'll probably say something about that.
Okay, then we'll go. We'll do that one. I don't want to double dip you.
Yeah. Okay. Super.
Item D1, public hearing, consideration of ordinance granting a zone change. Counsel, any questions? Item D2, public hearing, special use permit. Any questions? Item three, special use permit, car wash.
Lisa.
I was looking, are they using the existing structure or are they just putting another structure coming in the same spot?
New structure in the same spot.
Okay.
Seeing that with these new fully automated car washes, where they just take out the old one and put in a fully automated new one. Item four, prohibiting use and contact with designated groundwater. These MSDs, we've had a couple of these, and it's basically just saying, I will not drink the toxic stuff underneath my property.
I will not drill a hole in my property, isn't it?
I will not make tea.
Yes.
For most.
Any other questions?
So, but again, with this, it's, this is just the first step in that process, right? Is this going to come back to us?
I don't believe it comes back to us. I believe the word is part of the approval process. Is Mindy White here?
This is her.
Mindy, do you want to answer? You're probably more apt to answer.
This is a process that the applicant, which is TerraCon in this case, on behalf of the property owner does through TCQ. And this is one step in that process where we, as the city, say that we're going to have the ordinance that will be put forward before y'all that caps that groundwater from being utilized at any point in the future. But part of their obligation to the state also is that they are going to talk about how they're going to go in there and clean up any contamination and to what level they'll do so.
Okay.
I believe they have to have public meetings with us first, and then it goes to TCQ, correct?
Correct. We had a public meeting in July with the general public, and it was a hearing tonight ahead of your vote. And then after that, they continue the process with TCQ.
Item five, authorizing CDBG annual action plan. Any questions on this one? Appreciate staff on that one. Consent agenda, item six, approval of minutes, item seven, Salvation Army. Item eight, interlocal, Denton County for Civic Circle. Item nine, assumption of Denton County Freshwater District's water contract.
I have a question about.
Item 1A. Yes, sir.
So, my recollection from you on the council on the water disport, that's pretty expensive water. That contract, when is it?
I don't believe that.
It's in ratchets too, so that once you get a ratchet, you can't go below it.
So I believe there's just a demand charge that's paid towards it, that is expensive. But I don't believe there is an end to that contract.
You can't, like, switch to somebody else, I guess, basically.
I mean, we can, I don't know if we have, I don't have a good answer for you on that, so I can look into that.
Is it like our contract with Dallas where we're locked into a certain block of gallons?
No. What it is, is that it's a very strange situation where you have, we're taking our effluent, we're Upper Trinity transported it to Castle Hills and then sold it to 1A, we sold it to 1C, I believe, and 1C uses it for.
All of it.
Green space. Green space, but also, it also allows the district to be able to put water into Lake Avalon if there was a drought or things like that. So the weird part was when we annexed Castle Hills, took over their contract, suddenly our effluent is now being purveyed to us through Upper Trinity's pipe. But it's Upper Trinity's pipe that demand charges that fixed cost of that pipe. So we're paying that fixed cost, which ends up being the majority of the cost that you're talking about.
Opportunity for conversation. Item 10, counsel, you have been presented with updated documentation for item 10, so if we're going to approve consent agenda, we need to make sure to make a comment with updated materials.
There were no major substantive changes on the documents, other than, I think, two word changes. So, but it is, this is the correct version that's been handed out to you today.
And that's Pete Place.
Pete, yes.
Item 11, United Way of Denton County. Again, COVID. And that's the last of our consent agenda. Item 12, changing qualifications and duties of the Arts Advisory Board. To help them close that vacancy.
Is this, I'm reading just a change of qualification. Is there also a duty change as well?
They're, yeah, of republic. Oh, there was just a clarification on public art, so making recommendations on public art. So I think previously, when it was established as James Kunkke, do you want to talk about it?
Yes, when the board was established, we didn't have a public art program. So when the public art program was created, it was created with council consent, and there's a directive that guides it. The directive says that the arts board fills that advisory role, and it's worked fine, but since we were amending ordinance anyway, we thought it was cleaner to go ahead and put it in the ordinance.
Okay, so it's really not a change of what they're actually doing, it's just documented.
Correct. It's kind of fine what we've been doing for the past five or six years.
So what type of person is this ultimately, are we going to be able to look for now?
Other than what we have been looking for, so who do we think would fill that?
Well, we've had several people that have expressed interest, but we've been, right now, actually, that space has inadvertently been filled by someone who doesn't meet the qualifications anyway. So we just simply would not have to remove them and replace them with a hotelier at this point.
Yeah, qualifications hotelier, because they're impacted by the arts tax. Any other questions off the top? All right, do we have any closed session this evening?
Yes, sir.
With that, we are done with workshop. We will reconvene at 7:00 for the council meeting. All right, it is 7:00 PM, August 7th, 2023, and we are calling this meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. I have Councilmember Troyer with the invocation.
Please stand and join me in the form of contemplation. Thank you. Please join me in the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and protected by law, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right, so we have a fun proclamation this evening. We're going to walk through this. Whereas music has the power to bring people together, to create community, and to make our lives more enjoyable, and whereas playing music on the porch is a simple but effective way to share our love of music with others and to build stronger connections with our neighbors, and whereas playing music on the porch can help to reduce stress, improve mood, and boost creativity, making it a healthy and enjoyable activity for people of all ages, and whereas the city of Louisville is committed to creating a vibrant and livable community where everyone can thrive, now therefore I, TJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Louisville, with no musical talent whatsoever, do hereby proclaim August 26th as International Play Music on the Porch Day. On this day, I encourage all residents of the City of Louisville to come out onto their porches and play some music. Whether you're a seasoned musician or a beginner, all are welcome to participate. Let's come together as a community and celebrate the power of music and fill our porches with the sound of laughter, singing, and dancing. Let's make our city a more vibrant and livable place for everyone. And in witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to seal the city of Louisville to be affixed this seventh day of August 2023. And Councilmember Kelly will be giving us a bit more information at the end tonight about this, because I believe this is his idea, and I think it's amazing. It's going to be a lot of fun. Agenda item D, public hearing. Number one, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from office district and single-family residential district to Old Town Mixed Use II district on approximately .15 acres out of the JW King survey abstract number 696, located at 121 Milton Street as requested by William P. Wedge, the applicant on behalf of Wedge Revocable Living Trust, the property owner, case number 23-06-10-Z. The applicant is requesting to rezone 121 Milton Street from office and single-family residential to Old Town Mixed Use II district. The request is in alignment with Louisville 2025 Vision Plan and the Old Town Master Plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 7 to nothing on July 18th, 2023. It is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above, and we do have Mr. Richard Lutke, our planning director, available for questions. Counsel, if there are no questions, I will entertain a motion to close.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Passes unanimously. Counsel, entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 0.15 acres out of the JW King survey abstract number 696, located at 121 Milton Street, from office district zoning to single-family residential district zoning to Old Town Mixed Use II district zoning, correcting the official zoning map preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item two, public hearing, consideration of special use permit for automotive repair minor on approximately 3.251 acres legally described as VFW Edition Block A Lot 1, located at 997 State Highway 121 Business Zone Light Industrial District, as requested by Jose Luis Belisanzie Tango Car Clinic on behalf of Prestige Garage LLC, the property owner, case number 23-06-9-SUP. Tango Car Clinic, a business specializing in electronic modular programming, calibration, wheel alignments, and minor repairs, is currently operating at 405 East State Highway 121. The Mill Street Realignment Project requires the relocation of the car clinic. The Unified Development Code requires a special use permit for the proposed automotive repair minor business. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 7 to nothing on July 18th, 2023, and it is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. Richard Lutke, our planning director, available for questions. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for a minor automotive repair facility on a portion of an approximately 3.251 acre tract legally described as Lot 1 Block A VFW Edition, located at 997 State Highway 121 Business and Zone Light Industrial District, providing for repealer severability, penalty, and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item three, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for a car wash with an associated alternative standard regarding secondary walkway width on an approximately .89 acre lot legally described as Lot 1R-1B Block G Lake Point Phase III, located at 780 Lakeside Circle Zone General Business District, as requested by Russ Nelson, Lone Star Builders, on behalf of GB Overflow LLC, the property owner, case number 22-12-8-SUP. Quick quack, say that five times fast. Is a growing car wash company proposing to tear down the existing car wash at 780 Lakeside Circle and build a new car wash at this location? A special use permit is required by the Unified Development Code for the car wash. An alternative standard to allow a secondary walkway width of five feet in lieu of the required 12 feet has been requested. Enhanced building design and landscaping is proposed to complement the high level of landscaping existing on the site. The Planning and Zoning Commission and the Overlay District Board recommend unanimous approval 7 to nothing on July 18th, 2023, and it is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance and associated alternative standards as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Richard Lutke, our planning director, is available for questions. And if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Passes 6 to nothing. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
Are we also moving to approve the associated alternative standard?
Ah, we do need the associated alternative standard, so that was the width of five feet and enhanced landscaping. Counsel, are you good with those additions to the motion?
I'm in the motion to approve the additional standards. It wasn't in the motion, I was trying to read it.
Yeah.
We good?
We're good.
Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for a car wash on an approximately 0.89 acre tract legally described as Lot 1R-1B Block G Lake Point Phase III located at 780 Lakeside Circle and zoned General Business District, providing for repealer severability, penalty, and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote.
Okay.
Motion passes unanimously. Item four, public hearing, consideration of ordinance prohibiting the use of and contact with designated groundwater beneath approximately 42.887 acres comprised of two real properties generally described as approximately 35.694 acres in the PK Wagner survey A-1342, City of Louisville, Denton County, Texas, and tracks 1 and 2 Blake C. Bowen Edition, approximately 7.193 acres in the Peter K. Wagner survey abstract number 1342, City of Louisville, Denton County, Texas, to facilitate certification of a municipal setting designation by the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality pursuant to the Texas Solid Waste Disposal Act. The applicant is requesting an ordinance prohibiting groundwater from the designated lakeside crossing site from being used as a drinking water source as part of the state's requirements for a municipal setting designation for the property. The city's support of an MSD designation is required as part of the application process. The support is demonstrated through the approval of an ordinance restricting groundwater use on the property. Potential development of the site is limited without the MSD due to the historical contamination present. It is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Mindy White, our sustainability manager, available for questions. And I do have three other folks available. We have Derek Goodman here, does not wish to speak but is available for any questions. We have Susan Rainey from Lock Lord LP, she's counsel for the applicant, does not wish to speak but is available for questions. And we have Lance Crabtree, also in support, doesn't wish to speak but available for any If there are no questions, counsel.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve is set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Attorney?
This is an ordinance prohibiting the use of and contact with designated groundwater from beneath the designated property generally located at the northwest corner of FM 407 and Interstate 35E Louisville, Texas, comprising of two real properties generally described as approximately 35.694 acres in the PK Wagner survey A-1342, City of Louisville, Denton County, Texas, and tracks 1 and 2 Blake C. Bowen Edition, approximately 7.193 acres in the Peter K. Wagner survey abstract number 1342, City of Louisville, Denton County, Texas, and legally described on Exhibit A attached hereto, to facilitate certification of a municipal setting designation of said property by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality pursuant to the Texas Solid Waste Disposal Act, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item five, public hearing, consideration of resolution authorizing the adoption of the Community Development Block Grant 2023 Annual Action Plan, authorization for the city manager or her designate to submit the plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and acknowledgment of receipt of the recommended fiscal year 2023-2024 city social service agency fund budget of $240,000 from the CDBG Advisory Committee. An annual action plan must be submitted to the Department of Housing and Urban Development by August 15th, 2023 as a requirement to receive community development block grant funds of $762,768 in fiscal year 2023-2024. The CDBG Advisory Committee reviewed applications submitted by nonprofit agencies for projects that address HUD national objectives and consolidated plan priorities. At a meeting on July 18th, 2023, the committee voted 6 to nothing to recommend a social services budget with CDBG and city funds, $240,000. The plan was made available for a 30-day public comment period. It is recommended that the city council approve the resolution and acknowledge the receipt of the recommended fiscal year 2023-24 city social service agency fund budget as set forth in the caption above. Counsel, if there are no comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a quick comment. I know that, I'll just say that I know that we had more agencies applying this year, and so I just wanted to say thank you to the advisory committee, and I'm sure the extra time and effort, because I know it was very difficult this year to choose between the bigger pool of applicants. So with that, I will move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Motion passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution and acknowledge receipt of the recommended city social service agency fund budget as set forth.
Move to approve the resolution and acknowledge the receipt of the recommended FY 2023-24 city social service agency fund budget as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Item E, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience stamping a feat, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. Counsel, we do have three e-commerce that were received and should have been distributed to you from Ainsley Stelling, Ari Behringer, and a second one from Ainsley Stelling. These are all regarding short-term rentals that I know city staff is actually doing some research on now, but these are all in opposition to short-term rentals. And next up, I have Mr. Brian Webb. Mr. Webb, if you could please state your name and address for the record. Oh, I like it this way. Make him work for it. Brian, it's good to see you.
Good to see you too, Mayor. Brian Webb, 4112 High Road, Flower Mound, Texas. I am here tonight on behalf of the Summit Club of Flower Mound. I'm the president of this club, and for the past three years, our club members have hosted the Flower Mound Smoke Fest, a state championship barbecue competition designated as a state championship by our senators in Austin. And this event will be held on October 27th and 28th. October 28th is also National First Responders' Day. We, like you, love our first responders. They're the first ones in when somebody's in trouble or is needing service. So we're wanting to celebrate and recognize first responders throughout the county. I believe most of you, if I got my email typing right, received a note from me about a couple weeks ago. We would love to have the city of Louisville represented at the Smoke Fest with teams from your first responders, from your police department, fire department, Public Works, EMS, whoever can pull a team together, we would love to have them. Information on the event is available at www.fmsmokefest.com. About the Summit Club is located at summitclub.org. We're getting ready to celebrate our 50th anniversary in January, and we're working on a big celebration of that with our sister organization, the Women of Flower Mound, who we don't talk about their age, but they're the same age as we are. But with that, I do thank you. I thank you for your consideration, and we do look forward to seeing Louisville represented at the Flower Mound Smoke Fest.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor.
And appreciate you all with the hot dogs and helping out the families getting started over at LHS this past weekend, so it is seen.
It was a hot day.
I'm pretty sure you just laid the hot dogs out and they just cooked themselves at this point, right?
We could have, but we used our grills, and I think the final count was about 5,400 hot dogs cooked.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
A lot of kids got help that day, and that's good.
I have Mr. Robert DeLeon here to speak about an art show, and if you could please name an address for the record, sir.
Yes, Mayor, my name's Robert DeLeon. I'm at 250 North Mill Street, Unit Number 2, right across the street. I'm a Western artist. Moved here from Santa Fe, Mexico, in '21, and I moved here because it was supposed to be not so hot. So, but I'm having a solo exhibit. I'm a national and Texas artist. I'm having a solo exhibit at the gallery here at the Grand Theater, and I'm inviting all of you, and I've brought some invitations, so you'll get them in your box. And I hope you can make it. It's all Western artwork. One of the paintings will be of Main Street of the Longhorn Cattle Drive, so I hope you can make it.
Do you happen to know the dates when you'll be exhibited?
September 1st, 7 to 9, and then artwork hangs for a month after that.
Wonderful. Great. Thank you so much. We look forward to it.
Thank you.
All right, I have no further comments for Visitor Citizens Forum, so we will move on to item F, the consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Do we have any requests to pull an item?
No, sir.
All right. Counsel, I would appreciate if we could move to approve the consent agenda with the updated First Amendment in item 10.
Okay, I will move to approve the consent agenda with the updated, updated information in agenda item 10.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Consent agenda is approved 6 to nothing. G, regular hearing, item 12, consideration of amendment to city ordinance number 3829-12-2010 to change the qualifications and duties of the Arts Advisory Board. The nine-member Arts Advisory Board was created by city council in 2010 because a much-of-the-board's responsibility involves recommendations for use of hotel tax revenue. One seat on the board was reserved for a representative of the local hotel or attraction. The seat has been vacant for more than two years despite efforts by staff to recruit a qualifying member. This proposed ordinance amendment would make the requirement for a hotel or attraction representative into a preference. Proposed amendments also would broaden the field of eligible educator representatives to include additional schools and add public art recommendations as a power of the board. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as described in the caption above. We do have our director. We do have our Director of Community Relations and Tourism, Mr. James Conkey, available for questions. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the ordinance as, the amendment to the ordinance as presented in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending ordinance number 3829-12-2010 by amending the qualifications of the Arts Advisory Board and adding an additional duty to the Arts Advisory Board of serving in an advisory capacity to the City Council in matters pertaining to the acquisition, commissioning, decommissioning, and placement of public art, providing for severability, providing a repealer, providing an effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Reports, next up are reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Councilmember Meredith, do you mind if we start with you tonight?
All right, Mayor, I've got some library activities for the week. Morning Book Buzz, active adult book club for adults Wednesday, August 9th, 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. No registration required at the Crawford Meeting Room. Resumes with Renee for adults Thursday, August 10th, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. No registration required again at the Crawford Meeting Room. And Storytime at East Hill Park for families with children of all ages Friday, August 11th, 9:00 to 9:30. No registration required at East Hill Park, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Toria?
Yes, I have some activities at the Louisville Grand Theater. First of all, performances. The only performance that I, we have here listed is the acoustic jams, which take place every Friday, Friday night from 6:00 to 9:00, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville. Activities, we have a Val Art Talk, Exploring Art Quilt Collage, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville on August 8th. Val Workshop Semi-Abstract Art, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville on August 15th and 16th. Garden Secrets Class, Keyhole Gardening, presented by Keep Louisville Beautiful, August 17th. Pilates in the Plaza, presented by Pilates in the City, Wednesdays. This is representative change from last year. Yoga in the Plaza, presented by Blue On Juice Studios, Thursdays, also a change. Tai Chi in the Plaza, presented by Lowell Johnson, on Saturdays. And we have two exhibitions, First Fresh Ideas 2023, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville. That's going on through August 19th. And Small Work, presented by Visual Art League of Louisville, from August 20th through September 16th. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretary?
No report, Mayor.
Officer, thank you. Mr. Lutke?
No report, Mayor.
Come on, Parks fans.
Mayor, City Council, Parks fans, just a reminder that kids are going back to school this week, so Sun Valley Aquatic Center will only be open on weekends through September 3rd now, so. But Old Town Splash Park will still be open every day except for Thursdays, and I think we are partnering with our friends over at PD tomorrow to do kind of like a pop-up pops with the cops event for back to school from 10:00 to 2:00 at Old Town Splash Park, so hope to see everybody there.
No report.
Thank you.
No report, Mayor.
Thanks for the technical assist on the podium.
I just have the lake level report. We're at 90.4% at a level of 519.95 feet.
Drop below 520. Uh-oh. It's getting tight.
Just want to give you update real quick on the public safety facility. The third level of the parking garage is complete. They're going to start the fourth level. Still some more drilling going on, appears about 95% done with that. Things are moving quick over there, on schedule, and we got some good news that we had thought that there was a duck bank that was going to be a major problem and a delay, and it's not going to happen. So we're in good shape. No delays, moving forward.
Good deal. Thank you. Councilmember Kelly?
So, real quick, two things. One, chiefs, if you need somebody to help sample barbecue in anticipation of that event coming up in October, I volunteer, because I'm a team player like that, so that sounds great. Looking forward to that. That sounds like a lot of fun. The National International Play Music on the Porch Day, this is a big event, so it started in 2014. Over 1,000 cities, to my knowledge, we're the only one that sent a proclamation on this. 1,000 cities, 70 countries, International Play Music on the Porch Day. We did this last year at my house. We had about 15 musicians. People walking the dog stopped by. Some people came out and listened to this for a while. Any level, there's, I think, Stacy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's something going on at Thrive as well as the front porch to Louisville. I saw Louisville Brass was going to be out there. Is that right?
All right, thanks. Yes, we'll be having a pop-up jam kind of out on the porch, and we'll be working with the Southwells and their band out there, and so we're hoping to grow that over the years and have more of the local artists come and join us.
It's a lot of fun. No matter your musical ability, no matter what you play, you have an accordion or kazoo, bring it to my house, bring it to Thrive. Love to have you out there. If you can sing, you can croon, you can beat poetry, doesn't matter, just have some fun. It's a great event. That's everything I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Green?
So I also just wanted to, Stacy stole my thunder a little bit about school going back in. I just wanted to remind everyone to be mindful about school zones. They will be reactivated Wednesday morning, and you know, lots of little kids out there excited about going to school and maybe not paying quite as much attention as they should be, so please be mindful of that. I also wanted to say, I was very saddened to hear that we had another drowning at the lake this week, and unfortunately, again, the person who drowned was not wearing a life jacket. I believe there was a second person that was attempting to save that person, and they had a close call themselves. We provide life jackets. Please, please, please utilize a life jacket. I know everybody thinks it can't happen to them, but it does happen, so I just wanted to remind everyone, enjoy the lake, but please wear a life jacket.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Yep, I just want to remind everyone that this Saturday, August 12th, we'll be having our annual budget workshop. Everybody's welcome to attend. It's at the Municipal Annex in the Glenmore Savage Room. The time, well, it goes from 9:00 a.m. to whenever we finish, but it's a great way to kind of learn how the city is allocating the funds, and if you can't make it, you can always watch it on YouTube. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Kate?
Well, everybody just took all my stuff, but we have, I will say that we have lots of animals that need to be adopted. Unfortunately, we're bursting, so.
Yeah, absolutely. City Manager?
Couple of small things. I wanted to first thank the American Chinese community organizations. We had more than 200 volunteers arrive at Central Elementary School this weekend. They outfitted 300-plus backpacks to families of Central, and we couldn't be more grateful. It was a great event, great community building, and really appreciate all the work there. I do have one other event coming up this month is the Mayor's Pizza Challenge, and so Motor City Pizza did this a couple of years ago, and they've decided to bring it back. They now have 10 mayors competing from Denton County. Half of the points for winning come from the quality and design of the pizza. I got this. I got this. The other half comes from fundraising, and so we are each tasked with raising up to $4,000, and that $4,000 is the other 40 points that we can get. So if you are interested in supporting a great nonprofit, there's 10 of them. I happen to be backing CCA on this one, so be mindful to check out my Facebook page. You can find it there, or if you can go to Motor City Pizza and they can get you some information, but they have great pizza, and it's a lot of fun, and bragging rights between 10 mayors is kind of a cool thing, so let's see what we can do. With that, we do not have any closed session, and as there is no additional action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we are adjourned. It is 7:31.